It's Martin.
We're live, we're live, okay. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the first Buckingham Town Council Committee meeting of 2025. Good for you all, a great Happy New Year. Before we start tonight, many of you have heard that Steve Staley died. He was our market manager at one time, served in the army, he served in the British Legion, and he was also a community police officer at one time. So we are going to have a minute's silence in his honour. Keep your space. Thank you very much, thank you everyone. We start on the agenda there, no public speakers tonight, I told you, absent pause. Thank you, that noted. Thank you, Ron. A declaration of interest, we see declarations of personal or presidential interest. Robin?
Just in case we ever get to consider a application, I'd better say, I'd like to miss out on that opportunity.
Thank you, so that's noted. Item three minutes, the minutes of the planning committee meetings held on the 2nd December and the 16th of December will be presented in the February planning committee meeting. Thank you. Item four, Buckingham neighbourhood plan, their built-in plan, Buckingham local plan, Steve, any updates?
So I know in the middle of Regulation 16, feedback presumably soon after that day closes, which is 30th January.
30th of January, yes, so that's in progress. Anyone who wants to take part in that consultation individually of course is welcome.
Just through the chair, if not, but for us all to know exactly what Regulation 16 involves and what it actually does, although I've probably heard it, I probably haven't remembered, but what it actually involves.
It's the consultation that the county council do with the public and statutory consultants.
Our draft, our final draft went to the county council in December and consultation on it continues until 30th of January. Thank you, Ron. Just while we're on that figure, many of you will be aware that Buckinghamshire Council leader Martin Tett warned everyone of new possible housing figures for Buckinghamshire. The current compulsory housing figure has been 61,000 over the next 20 years, the increase. He's now warning us that figure could increase to 95,000 plus one new town with at least 10 and a half thousand people, making a potential increase in the population of Buckingham. About 105,700. At the same time, all councils have been told by the government they must carry out without views. Robin, and then, Ron.
With the greatest respect, Martin's saying what he thinks it is, and I think it would be more prudent of us, if we want to establish the facts, to go through the source. There has been no intention for new towns and in Buckinghamshire, as being cited easily in social media and in correspondence, but there has been no announcement to that effect. And also, the legislation is in the MTPF on grey belt, and it's not grey belt, it's grey belt, an afternoon term. And the grey belt apparently is language was developed previously, not land what hasn't been developed. So I think it's important that we wait and see what it is, but it'd be much better if Martin spent his time actually getting the Buckinghamshire Plan actually done, so that it was completed than what the MTPF says. I respect his right to view, but I do think we should seek our own correspondence on it and seek our own information on it, because it's becoming quite unnecessarily challenging. And he has every right to view instead of other people. And I think we need to actually make sure what information we get is our independent information. And if we were going to want it, we'd actually agree that we would actually seek that information. Maybe we need to revisit that at some point, Chair, just to make sure that what we do and what we talk about is actual, and it may be worse than what it says, and it might be better than what it says. But I'd rather deal with the actual, it's not the intelligence based upon the information. You can imagine, he's very close to the government, so he will know exactly what the government's doing.
Thank you, Owen. I'll just remind members, we are employing town neighbourhood plan consultants to advise us on exactly this. And I spoke to them, I had an email this strange this afternoon and told them what Martin Tett was saying. And I will stress again, I said he warned this could potentially be. And they said they have exactly the same information and there's given me no actual figures available for months here. So, but they are working for us, Ron.
Thank you, Chair. I was going to say pretty much the same as Robin. I think, as you've just said, Chair, that the company that's working for us on the neighbourhood plan, have said that they've had the same information as you, which is hearsay and rumour. There is no foundation in fact in any of it, and I think we need to be very careful that we work on that to allow the supervision.
Thank you. Right, you can move on then. We have only two planning applications we need to deal with tonight. The first of the three is Whitehouse Farm, Borton Road. Catherine has circulated the details, but that has already been, we've already responded to that, members agreed. But with the rider, that we still would like to see these solar panels of the new barn reinstated as in the original application. Anything to add to that, Catherine?
No. Thank those of you who have been very prompt about it when it was filed, and it is on the file before the decision, and the decision, our response has been quoted, so I know that they've taken note of it.
Thank you. So the next item then, item two is land to west of Ozy Way, and this is phase four of the Ozy Way development. You're reporting again on Catherine's service, and if I could just say at this point, thank you to Catherine for working all the way up until New Year, she was in on New Year's Eve, showing us together with other staff. So many thanks for that work to get this out. Time was against us, obviously, on it. Originally, this is going to be 13 dwellings, but the only application for us tonight is for nine dwellings in phase four, four at the moment have not yet been put in. So we'll presume they will come back at a later date, either as phase four, version two, or as phase five even. But we're talking about tonight the nine houses which are on the new entry road to the estate off the Gorket Road. Phase two, next door is going to take some of the original planned houses, 28 houses that would have been in phase four, being moved to phase two. There's just three designs on these nine houses, which originally were going to be custom-built houses. They've now been put in as little good, new head-built houses under the names of Skylark, Kingfisher and Plougher. You will notice all of them have chimneys, which is a good thing. So the history of the estate at the moment, phase one was 121 dwellings for the 40 affordable houses. Phase two, which we'll be doing in a minute, 152 dwellings with 60 affordable houses. Phase three, 134 dwellings with 47 affordable houses. Then phase four, which is this, nine of 13 dwellings written at night with no affordable houses. That is because those have all been taken up on other parts of the estate. So where we are at the moment with this is 420 houses with... Lost my turn. Affordable houses. Yeah, 420 dwellings of 147 affordable houses, which is just quite over 35%. Which again, please take with you.
Can I just ask, when they say affordable housing, do you... Because you said, social housing and affordable housing, two very different things. Affordable housing is, I think, has to be a minimum of 20% below the current housing cost, and social housing is 50% below. Is that something that would be down to development decide, or is that goes in the housing association that is giving the number?
We'll get onto that in a moment, because that, because we're looking at the moment, has no affordable houses. I'm just giving you a general overview. So all we want members to do at the moment is to decide if they're happy with what we've been presented with tonight.
I think the important thing about it's nine is that you will have a choice of design. There are two layouts for both floors, so there are four possible ways to do it. It's not really custom-built, there's a certain amount of customer choice. And basically, it's whether you want a separate kitchen dining or a combined kitchen diner, and whether you want an ensuite upstairs or a study.
So Karen, what can you say?
Buckinghamshire have really no objection to these nine dwellings. As you say, they have chimneys, they are of reasonable design. And we'll go on to the next application when we get on the plan.
Thank you. Anyone else got any news on this? In that case, I'm not in.
It's amazing, thank you. Just in the nick of time. Are they, or could you tell me whether they're in their own private driveway area, or is that...
No, that's the new act. The description of the outline plan was two new accesses off Ozy Way and one new access off the Gorket Road. And this is the new access off the Gorket Road, north side, it gives nine in a row.
So you can only get to it from the Gorket Road then?
No, you can get to it from the rest of the estate, you drive through the whole estate.
Oh, okay, right. Or, or out?
Or off the Gorket Road.
Off the Gorket, right, thank you.
Thank you. Just one point I'll raise before I propose, I think we need to add the rider about the wastewater treatment that Anglia and Water have told us they don't have capacity at the moment, so that needs to be...
Always on all of them.
Yes, as we know what happened, it made the water not dry. So I propose with that rider that we have no objections. Seconded by Anthony, all those in favour? Let's, need to count on this. Where's the one? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, I make that, seven in favour, anyone against? Abstentions? Two, three, four, five, six, four abstentions, thank you very much, that's carried then. Right, now we can move on to the second part, which is the amended plans for phase two, which is now going to be 152 dwellings with 60 affordable houses. Catherine has highlighted on page 11 some of the comments that we have made and others have made, in red, she's opposite about highways and planters, and there's evidence this has been addressed. And further down on the back, proposed parking provision is considered satisfactory. However, there's no details of electric parking, but she says this has also been amended and every dwelling now has a charging point. Those without garages have a garden shed, and that includes all the affordable houses as well. Lucy?
And include the, any flats if there are any.
There are no blocks of flats at all on this estate, but there are first floor maintenance, the ground floor of which is an accessible dwelling.
Okay, oh, thank you.
Right, further on in her report on page 12, the housing officer, Lucy, this is where you come in. Buckingham neighbourhood plan requires 35%, which means the minimum of 53 houses to be affordable homes. And this is from the housing officer, Buckinghamshire Council. But they note the housing tenure plan proposes a total of 60 affordable homes. This number would be satisfactory, and this actually takes it over the 35%. Lucy?
Yeah, that wasn't quite what I was asking, the difference between social housing and...
Well, that follows up the next paragraph. The most current evidence for Valt supports a tenure split of 80% affordable rent and 20% intermediate housing. Therefore, minimum numbers of affordable housing for rent required would be 42, and numbers for low-cost home ownership would be 11. We, this is the housing officer, notes that the affordable housing tenure plan proposal is 47 homes for affordable rent and 13 homes for shared ownership, which is above, which is less than the developer's offering. And they say this mix would be satisfactory. Does that help, Lucy?
Not quite, but the social housing is a different class, which 22 of the four are them.
Yeah, so social, social housing would, it's rental, but it's, it's a bunch. For example, so my, my affordable rent isn't particularly affordable. It's about in line with the local cost, whereas social housing would be, should be, and what the government says, about half of the local rental price. So that's why I was asking whether this down, which it may not be down to the...
It's not written into the section policy that there should be any social housing. It's all got to be affordable and shared ownership. We have tried and tried to get social housing. I don't know that necessarily, I don't know the difference.
I think they don't want to know the difference.
Thank you. Right, yeah, the thing, the housing officer notes that affordable housing should not be distinguishable from the open market housing in terms of overall design details, build quality and materials, not by layout or separation from the general market housing. Affordable housing should be fully integrated into the scheme with clusters not exceeding 15 dwellings. In fact, but there are little clusters and they're all...
Well, the ones with the main nets, I believe, western end are 18.
18, yeah.
Because they, when you've got a ground floor accessible in the first floor maintenance net, they've only put one circle on it for a four dwelling, where there are in fact two. So that makes 18 in the western cluster, but there are no more than 18 in the cluster.
And the housing officer says 18, including flats, is acceptable under the affordable housing regime. I think probably the big concern for us, no doubt, for Buckingham society, would be about the build quality and the materials. Karen?
Indeed, and just following on from the housing officer and affordable housing so-called report. We don't think that the tenure blindness is sufficiently differentiated. It is quite clear what is affordable housing, and they're mainly smaller clusters of eight or nine, but they're jam-packed together, and it's really, well, it's cutting corners, isn't it? And they haven't really honestly tried to integrate affordable housing within the whole scheme. Overall, the design looks slightly better than the base one, which I must say is increasingly awful. I'm not sure everyone else has noticed the blandness and the uniformity and everything. But overall, it's quite clear that there are too many houses here. There was reports from the police commissioner and the highways on parking and so forth. And it is just trying to cram too many houses into this site. And that leads to so many complaints, we all know what they are, from antisocial behaviour to neighbourly disorders. And this is where I think Buckinghamshire Council have been very remiss in allowing quite such density on this site, particularly when the design elements are, at best, a few chimneys here and there, particularly on the outer edges. But in the middle of the, of the whole scheme, there are very few houses with chimneys, and they're just ordinary. And there's very little distinctive about it. So we, material objections are difficult, but we, we slightly despair at the... You can just, they're cutting corners, they're needing money, and they really have not considered the community.
Lucy?
And just to get to back up what Karen said about having all of the social houses, or all of the affordable houses kind of clustered together. The one really good thing about Stambles Fields development, Fran Robben and I were there the other day, and walked around, there's a couple of my friends living, they've got detached affordable houses there. Whereas if you can see over here, all but a few, they're all terraced or semi-detached, and they're all bunched in together, they're not interspersed, kind of sporadically throughout the development. They're all clustered together, because, well, I won't make any assumptions, yeah.
Martin?
Yeah, my worry is the rat run and the width of the roads that they've put in, really. With the identity of housing, the width of the roads being narrow, likely to be congested by people just casually parking around it, and also, you know, the joining from Gorket to Ozy Way. I'm surprised that hasn't been sort of, I know they've got some restrictions and there's bends and other bits, but, you know, there's a fair number of vehicle movements and there's some bobs going on. But hey though, you know, they will, they will build it and we will live with it.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay.
Well, I'm just going to go against them slightly, but is there a, is there a measure of density? I remember being told that, you know, we had to build estates in a greater degree of density, but is there a measure of density and are they overdoing it? I mean, are they, is it too dense?
Well, it's perfect. And I think, I haven't done this phase particularly, but the estate as a whole is about 36, Leicester is about 33. And that's density, I've got this.
And how much, how much should it be or how much proceeds?
Well, there is no standard. I mean, you can pack it in, if your local authority will give you the permission. And obviously, if you've got blocks of flats like you have at Leicester, that really increases, because you can have 36 flats on the area that two houses might take up.
Do we have anything about it in the neighbourhood development plan? Do you, have you got anything in there about density?
They're really, but I'll have to top my head up, because I can't remember what it is.
Just, just find my thing back.
We have looked into that.
Keeping an eye on it for the future, we can't bail this one, but...
I'm just making the point that we have no say now in how many houses, because that was just objectually, the outline plan application, 420 houses, and they can't grow up, but they can go down. But just going back to affordable housing, if everyone remembers going back to July last year, we noted affordable housing should be indistinguishable from sale housing, but none of the affordable dwellings have a chimney, but then Catherine points out more about the number of sale houses. None of the affordable dwellings have a garage and few have driveway parking. A lot of the group houses have banks of perpendicular parking bays in front, which A identifies the tenure type and B does not enhance the street scene. None of the affordable house types are named, even though some are almost identical in design to the main house types, which indicates a negative attitude to those who cannot afford to buy. And that's reinforced by the use of lower quality materials. Every house under Valt should be the same build quality materials, including unseen items like insulation thickness. There is no social rent housing proposed. People, e.g. many key workers who cannot afford 80% market rent, still need housing. Some tend to be parking the sale terrace housing remote from the actual dwellings, and therefore there's no surveillance. That brings up what you mentioned earlier, the police were concerned about that, but they have made some changes. And wire cut bricks look undoubtedly aren't cheap. Stock bricks should be specified throughout. That's our main contentions at the time, and none of those have yet been answered. And the other thing, of course, that we've been very strong about, there's no open, sorry, there's no leisure provision for adults undercover, nowhere to meet or exercise undercover, although there is open air leisure obviously for children. Taking this estate to go with Stambles Fields, that means 800 houses have no facilities for social activities that might help build a community, rather than involuntary. Yeah?
One more comment, my favourite of refuge collection, big stores. Again, linked with the, with the road system. Yes, they may have put in turning circles and dead ends, but they will probably be used up by the residents. And therefore, that may be, you know, it's great on a plan, but when it's up and running, it may not be sufficient.
There are a number of cul-de-sacs where the inner ory will not go, and there are inflection points that the mouth, the cul-de-sac. Some of these involve residents in hauling their bins 20 to 30 minutes.
Yeah, that's, again, you see, unacceptable in a new estate. Yes, obviously in the old town, that has to happen some places, you can't get over that. But it wouldn't for the future here. You know, dear.
Anyone else? Right, in that case, I'm going to propose that we oppose this application on the grounds of lack of tenure blindness, concerns about, Martin has just said, about the rubbish collection and the distances people have to walk. Concerns about security, particularly surveillance of your own vehicles, where in some cases, you can't see your vehicle from your house, even from the sale houses. And other houses have got other people's cars parked in front of them, which the police have said can cause friction in neighbourhoods. And then also, they are concerned that there is still no undercover places to meet or exercise for adults. And to repeat that, you know, over 800 houses together with Stambles Fields have no facilities for social activities on which to build the community. And for those reasons, I propose we oppose this. Anthony, seconded. All those in favour? Well, it's up to Robin, I think. And Anya, take a part. So Anya, because you came later, were you declaring a...
Yes, on the same ground.
Yeah, on the same, thank you very much, yeah.
As I have before, and that Robin does.
Thank you. Well, that concludes our plans tonight. There are a couple of items, as we're seeing in Catherine's notes. Applications approved, land between 38 and 00, police station, which we have continued to oppose because the forestry commission have an enforcement notice to get on this land. And we felt that we'd be betting a possible criminal offence if we approved it, but Buckinghamshire Council has approved, presumably those seven houses, let it in, give permission. They still, yeah, not to be built if the forestry commission comes down heavily, but... Free applications we oppose, sorry, Martin?
What do you mean it comes down heavily? You don't have to come down heavily at all, they just have to enforce what they have said. You know, they...
36, probably.
Yeah. It seems weird that they've approved it.
That's exactly what I was saying.
It's just, again, it beggars belief. You know, delay it or whatever you like to do it, you know, if they've got no reason. But they have got a reason, but the forestry commission have got a claim to it at the moment, and they'll do, you know, enact them.
It is a criminal offence not to comply with an enforcement order from the...
Robin, maybe Karen. I just think it'd be worth members looking at where they do approve houses, where they does approve houses. And you'll probably find there isn't a constant pattern across Buckinghamshire when it comes to approvals and non-approvals. And also, it might be worth you looking at how much money they spend on appeals. If you shoot many, many thousands, more than we're likely to have in... Many, many thousands, more than we're likely to have in a lifetime. But I think it's worth counting because it doesn't seem to be a. Whether you agree or don't agree, that's one thing, but there didn't seem to be anything similar, there's no pattern. But she really makes it difficult. If you, whether you agree or don't agree, I mean, if you knew that it was. Consistent, thank you. That's really what I wanted to say, consistent, yeah. Thank you, I just couldn't get the word there, but that's brilliant, I've added that to my list of words for the day.
I haven't looked at the portal on this one, but do the Forest Commission know that they've given them? I mean, were they informed by Buckinghamshire Council? Were Buckinghamshire Council obliged to inform? I don't know the answer to those questions, I just wonder if anyone does, and maybe we should write to the Forest Commission and say, A.
But it was noted in the officer's report that the commission is live. It was noted in the report.
Yeah, that's One Direction, but not Back to Them, yeah.
Thank you.
Maybe we should.
Brief applications that we opposed were all refused. One of us, twenty-seven months ago, wrote on. Up on St Rumballs, which Lindsay first drew our attention to, I think, last July, Convergent Carport, studying washroom, it's respective. Perspective of application and it was refused on the grounds that there was insufficient parking. There had to be two and a half parking spaces for a three bedroomed house and the planning officer this time actually came down very strongly on that. What we're not happy about is how highways dealt with this. They have no objection to, said they'd undertaken an assessment in terms of impact on the highway. Network and parking provision was satisfied the application would have no impact. On the safety or operation of the joining public site. I really do question what highways were doing, who and everyone else were against this, and in fact, the applications turned down almost word to word. In the terms of our objection to it, so the owner now has twelve weeks. From middle of December to to appeal if he wants to appeal against that, Robin?
Yeah, I think it's gaining consistency. I worry because. Not in Buckingham, but on the outskirts of Buckingham, there is an application agreed on, as agreed just before Christmas. On the old army camp on the Goldlands. My understanding is several times it was turned down because of the highway entrance out onto the road before the bypass. And now then after, then an highway officer changed the view. And it's gone forward and got agreed under delegated powers and. And whether now it'll be built, it's a legal application, but. The consistency of views, my office doesn't seem to be there and I think that. That, well, we agreed, I agree, having known that when they did something, it was like what something else was, would be a start, wouldn't it? Because it's, you know, you're poking in, you're waiting, you could make all the things you want, it depends on. The view of the highway officer, I don't know whether, how we find out what is a good view. And of course, they are qualified legally able to make a decision. It doesn't mean we have to agree with it, does it? But they have got the law on their side and we haven't, so I don't know, I mean, we'll watch that space, I mean. When you just be careful when you go out there and this being constructed from the Goldlands, because it's not a great place to actually approach.
But we do have some opportunities to question highways decisions coming up, because there are a series of north. Planning area surgeries coming up, which we've been invited to, that could be one of them, or definitely it could come up at the next on.
Because the officer quite definitely came down on his side and dismissed what the highways have said. I mean, given that you can barely park a smart car on the remaining piece of drive. That doesn't really make two of the parking spaces. And you can bring up the front and back of the car doors, there is.
No way to park?
No way to park, except on the street.
Anyway, that one being refused, twenty-four London Road, front and rear extensions, raising roof, roof facing dormer. We opposed this one, we felt it would be inappropriate design for the area, it's part of the street. In the meantime, the agent had written to claim the summer scaffolding, which we suggested it was retrospective application. Was only for asbestos roof tile replacement and the removal of the chimneys under permitted development rights. Nonetheless, the planning officer had overruled that and. They say that the proposed development. Poses inappropriate design and appear incongruous and not sufficiently reflective of the characteristics of the host dwelling. The proposed doorway in combination with raising the roof would be a contrived and dominant design, would have a detrimental impact. On the character of the locality and would not respect host dwelling. This conflicted policy be to a fault and national planning policy frameworks. So that's one that we have, one at the moment, where that's going to end up, we don't know, I can't imagine the. Chymneys are going to be put back on this. And then finally, older house, next right underneath our council offices. Conversion of outlook off the residential unit, direction of cycle store and bin store. Which we oppose and that too has been refused on the grounds. That development resulted in poor quality living, a very poor outlook and limited natural light. That it would fail to provide adequate bicycle storage and would fail to encourage a ownership towards cycling. That there would be unacceptable harm to new trees that chase into the site. But the proposed bin storage bifurcated its sighting and associated hard standing within the route protection areas of three yew trees. Which were in the conservation area, which resulted in significant and adverse impact on the trees of the door and long term. They quoted not only that, but also our policy P H E, one of the Buckingham neighborhood plans, so. Well done, Catherine.
Really quite rude for an officer to report.
Have to look at it every morning. Just to also let everyone know about Allup Drive. You'll recall at the last meeting, we said that the amended condition thirteen about the wastewater had been approved by Buckinghamshire Council. Although they added a rider that, again, that no dwellings could be occupied if the. Wastewater disposal was not in place. On top of that, it was due to come up, as I reported at the last meeting. To the December nineteenth Strategic Sites Committee, and it was withdrawn that morning. After a legal challenge from the Bates Morgan Foscat Action Group. A barrister was taken on by the action group, but his advice was the council cannot lawfully accept the October twenty twenty-four. Reserve matters. Application resubmission nor grant consent. Time has expired for the applicant to make substantial amendments to his RMA application. Which in substance must amount to new applications. And I'm assuming, so on that, those grounds, there was nothing on the paper about why it's been withdrawn. But I'm just going to.
I can't add a lot to it. I had written to the. Well, actually, it's gone to the legal team eventually. I've written to the council, shall we say. And also raised the possibility of an objection, a legal challenge by an environmental group. On the wastewater issue and I had initially gotten a response that. That was all going to be fine and it could go ahead anyway and then on the morning of the app. No, the day before, it was withdrawn, but I wasn't given any additional information on why that was. So I, I mean, my assumption is they suddenly thought like, we can think about it a bit more.
Yeah, I think the groups you're talking about with Wildfish and Wasps. They're talking about mounting a judicial review.
They are.
It was approved. I've also reminded us that we were not notified of the strategic science meeting, which would have had a right to be represented. But as things worked out, we are aware of that, so hopefully lots of people take that on board, so we don't know when the next. Appearance will be.
No idea.
Yeah, I'm just saying. It ever grows to be of interest, isn't it, this application? I'm sure that somewhere it will become one of those case law studies about whatever, I mean. Was cited earlier about the drains and sewage and how the amendments to the plan. Which were to amend it to allow to take out the very conditions that were put in the application in the first place, after it was, why it was agreed. Reduction of it, it seems to be one of those applications that seems, everyone seems, be keen to get it processed. Against the will of the public there and. And it's one of those things, I think, that we'll probably have to be referring back to it as a study when we actually consider our applications in the future. Because it's now told us everything what could possibly happen, which shouldn't happen or we disagree with. I think maybe we need to know the experience and put a note in the entrée for future developments. Because we may find that the grounds which have been used have been purposeful.
Thank you, Robin. The only other application we had that had no objections was reduction of Apple Tree. Away from the wilds in Bartley. Buckinghamshire Council committee meetings, eighth of January is the next North Bucks meeting, that's this Wednesday, but there's no Buckingham applications. Strategic societies on the sixteenth of January, I don't know, the agenda here. Growth, infrastructure and housing select committees on thirteenth of January and Transport, Environment and Climate Change Select Committee.
Yeah, on the growth and infrastructure select committee, on the thirteenth of January. They're doing H I F programme, which is Mr Tech, examination of projects of. Avenue that are funding housing infrastructure fund. That might be something someone wants to read up on. And following on from that, which we talked about earlier, is there's going to be a report on planning appeals. Draken, so how the planning appeals work might be something that somebody might have an interest in. And the following, thirtieth of March, might be something that everyone's interested in. Because the housing strategy one, the program update, taking the comments we made about, or have been made tonight about affordable housing. Tenure blindness, the way it's built into there, that might be something. If it'd been on the thirteenth of March, that we might want to think about issues that are poignant, because there's plenty of time to plan for that. It's just the work programmes and indication where they're going to go. On the Transport Select Committee, on the thirteenth of February, which is a great day, isn't it? They're going to be, you know, the climate transition in there, there's. Not much going on in there apart from public electric vehicles charging and delivery. Which, which, which we mentioned, I think, by a member tonight mentioned about electric vehicle charging in development. Had they all got them, so that's something there, so and also street works which affects us when planning applications happen, so. It might be something there, people, if they're interested to look at, because. No doubt that, and air quality is back on the agenda, so. So that might be something, somebody might be interested. They're all very interesting topics and the thirteenth of February is probably your. Last and best opportunity to question that and also, which does affect Buckingham. Water infrastructure. So I think that might be something, somebody gets their teeth into water infrastructure, because as. Mark found out, didn't you, that we can ask as many questions as you like, long as it isn't the same person. So, so you can put many things on the same person. So, you know, if you do get excised any of that, it's all on the public website and I would encourage people to. Use these opportunities because. You know, when it comes to air quality, we discussed it, and we managed to get. A test done to lay on the bypass, didn't we, so. They're all things there, whatever, I mean, it's all on the website, anyone wants to just email me, I'll send the work programme. But I'd encourage other people to go, because it's lonely sat there sometimes, waiting to do a question, you know, and I.
Robin's just reminding me about the water business, Steve, I don't know if we can revisit it, but. I had intended to add the same rider to the application for phase two. As we did for phase four about the backup water facility, so could we just ask the committee to agree? What does that sound, which one was this? Item number three, amended plans. I think probably Catherine would have made a note, it's exactly the same as the first one, we just add the rider that. I think we, Catherine used it generally anyway, isn't it? Members happy with that. For those applications, we have to say anything about our concern about the lack of water treatment capacity. Thank you very much, thank you, Steve.
Just, I mean, come back to briefly, the people who are coming on the water infrastructure, I'm sure. Judging by what you've just said and the committees agree, it'll be Anglia Water. So they might be someone you want to talk to and see what they say about what's going on.
Thames water is for Buckinghamshire Council.
Well, they're going as well, so I'm not sure Thames Water is going to be there as well, so. So I don't know which goes first, when it comes to flooding, it always seems to be the other way around, doesn't it? But Anglia Water, they put it alphabetically on the agenda, so.
Thank you. Right, item A enforcement, there's three enforcement actions we've been notified being taken, they're not really for discussion. One's eighteen Castle Street, which is a listed building. And it's enforcement against lack of, against installation of signage, vertraments, elevation of the buildings, elevations of. Windows, blah, 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 blah. A two is enforcement notice at nineteen Castle Street, its neighbour, which is also a listed building for the same reasons. And A three is issue of a listed building temporary stop notice prohibiting from the date. The notice took effect, seventeenth of December, removal replacement of works to windows, internal works. Comprising subdivisions of rooms, et cetera, et cetera, fifteen Church Street. That's going to be listed. So that's just for now at the moment, that's enforcement matters we've been notified of. Item nine, any matters to report, damage to the purpose, redundant signs in the town, access issues or any other urgent matters.
Yes, April Cottage. We're wanting to bring this up, we've been able to do this last couple of meetings. It is deteriorating even further as we speak, every day. Can we send another, another chymneys?
Yes, I reported to Catherine just before Christmas that people were asking if they could board up the windows to stop further deterioration. And you were reporting it to.
Yes, I mean, what somebody had alleged was that some store had damaged the windows. I did look at everything I could. Because you can see the back quite clearly from the hospital entrance. And there didn't appear to be any damaged windows that weren't already boarded up. And we had anything to pill it on. I mean, the number of times that we've reported that April Cottage, you know, the weed growth, the window frames. It's on their books, what they're doing about it, I can't tell.
But, no, they couldn't avoid, yes, that's reported.
I'm supporting it again, that's decided should you assume. And I'd come to that report. On a, happened, I just made, I noticed Stratford Lodge. Had more than, yes, over the most removed and it looks very handsome. And I hope the new tenants will enjoy it.
I'm saying. Somebody brought up the matter of face, April Cottage and Stratford Lodge with me a while back, I can't actually find. Email, I think it's not called Summer, I noticed an email with the empty. Buildings officer, if that's the right title, it's probably not, but I've had no reply. But about a week, ten days later, work did start happening on. Stratford Lodge, which I was pleased to see, I don't doubt if it was anything to do with my email, but I tried to chase up. About April Cottage, but I've not had any response.
The day it started to snow, I went along, you know, by Ozzy, not Ozzy Way, yeah. To Rumball Field, we've had the problem with the labour. People dumping rubbish in the labour again. I noticed there was some there, but when I came back, it was snowy. And I drove, didn't actually get out to have a look again, take photographs, so anybody that's going along bypass, they'd started, there was. So anybody that's going along bypass, they'd started, there was, um, a tar, I was on the other side of the road, so I didn't want to swing across into the oncoming traffic, um, but, um, but it was snowing on the way back, so I didn't check, so it was all white. But, um, I, I think that lay-by there seems to be a chosen dumping ground in the evening.
This is only bypass.
Bypass, yeah, you know, the lay-by.
Yeah, backing on to.
Although, we did have gentlemen concerned about, um, that there, I mean, if it's still there, we need to report it. If it isn't, if it's gone, obviously somebody's reported it in the interim, which is marvellous. But, um, it does seem to be a favoured place to be.
Fix My Street again, it gets found immediately, twice reported on Fix My Street within two days.
Yeah.
Um, blight has been removed.
I will photograph it.
I reported that fly tipping on Tindray Grove about two weeks ago, it's still there.
No, well, it has been Christmas, so.
So perhaps, in fact, it's just not the right streets. Um, maybe they need to have certain streets.
I have an access issue to raise, um, many of you may have been caught out today at the Audi roundabout. Four-way traffic lights, this is where a horrendous done by, um, Open Reach. There are reports from people that it took forty minutes to get out of the industrial estate. Um, of course, it's a double whammy, because at the moment, this is all part of the diversion for the closure, the bike closure of the A forty-one at Watford. So all the traffic, truck, HGV traffic's being directed round our bypass, um, and we've got a four-way traffic lights, and they're going to be lasting from today until the sixteenth of January.
Really?
Yeah, it's still on the.
Right.
Cause my notice.
Six.
Ten days.
Early to.
Yeah. Just, there's not much we can do, but as, uh, when I mentioned to Steve, I really said, you know, that joined up. Anything else, anyone? No, thank you. Thank you very much for all that, um. Chair, it's not since I have none. Um, date of the next meeting is Monday, the third of February. That concludes business.